All right, it is seven o'clock and this is the Wealthly zoning board. And I have to begin immediately with an apology because we are not going to hear Cape Cod cannabis tonight. We got the wrong list of the butters. Not all the butters were notified. We cannot therefore conduct a legal hearing. And so I'm going to jump to that one, set the board and move for a continuance. We will be hearing that one on March 12th. So the board is, I wrote it down.
I'll be recused from that.
Yes, you're recused.
I'm also recusing myself.
Yes, yeah. It is Rita, Ciore, Janet Morrissey, Manny Heiliger, Will Sullivan and myself. And I need a motion to continue to March 12th.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We will do that case again and if anyone was here for that, I apologize. All right. Next is Thompson Romano, which still has never gotten a number. And the board for this is myself, Mick, Trevor, Manny and for Bruce, Janet Morrissey.
Sharon, can you just remind us why we're continuing this till tonight?
Yes, yeah. We have continued this one to review new drawings for a new porch deck. And to, that is asked as an amendment to the previously approved special permit.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if this is working or not. Hello. I'm Ben Zender and I'm here on behalf of Tim Thompson, who's also right to my right here. At the last meeting, we were requesting an amendment of an existing special permit for a, for an enclosed deck, which the board was not inclined to grant. And Trevor, thank you Trevor, suggested sort of the last minute, you know, an alternative result, which would be to maintain the railing system that's been constructed, but to remove the windows. And to submit revised plans showing that the windows and screens are not to be installed and can't be part of the project. And so what we've done is we've submitted a new sketch plan, a site plan, which all I've done is just to lean it out with words and talk about a screen porch and nothing else. And that plan is changing. And then on the elevation plan A1, we have notes that no windows or screens are to be installed. And then I think one change from the prior application was that there's a cable rail system on the second floor instead of a solid rail, which I'm hoping the board doesn't think is material. And then, then we've altered the floor plan A to just to remove any reference to a, to a screen porch on the first floor. So I'm hoping that with those, and also I had submitted to the board in, in addition to those proposed findings of fact from the project, which I hope you've all had a chance to look at. And with that, I think the only real change from the, from the original approval really is the nature of that railing, from a, from a, like a rail, like a better term, an open railing system to a, to a, to an opaque and enclosed railing system. So I'm hoping this is sufficient for you all to approve. And if you have any questions, you have, thank you.
All right. Questions for Mr. Zender?
I don't have any questions. I think he's, the applicant submitted exactly what we asked for. And I have no issues with this.
Questions? Done?
No.
Questions?
Not just yet.
Okay. Manny? Do you have any questions for?
I don't have any questions. I think we should move to findings.
Well, I think I have to see, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this? Mr. Ral?
Yeah.
Go, go to the, go to the mic, please.
I kind of need to be able for this.
I'll give it up, that's fine.
Okay, sure.
My contention that you should not approve this, for several reasons. One, I believe what was built wasn't, wasn't built to what you approved, or you were both misled onto what was built and what was approved. I believe the building to be too tall and three floors. I believe footings under said deck are faulty, substandard and illegal. And I need to walk you through some of those to see how you got, we got there, if I may. Now, what was presented to you is clearly as not as what has been built. So I don't think the board has been given the right information to make the right deliberations. And that information to you still hasn't been presented. But I do have some of that, which I'd like to share with you tonight.
Does this pertain to the deck?
Yes, it does.
Because that really is our focus tonight, not, not the height of the building, for example.
Okay. It could pertain to the footings of the deck, which goes to its structural safety.
If there are concerns with the footings, I would suggest that that's the responsibility of the building inspector to make sure that they comply. We do not enforce the building code.
So at this point in time, you're not willing to entertain the discussion of heights?
Right. Because we don't, the height is not in front of us. The, what is in front of us is a, is an amendment to the plan, which shows a, actually, in some ways, it's not an amendment to the plan, because it's, it's going back to what we originally approved, except that it's a solid rail instead of a...
It's an amendment to a pre-existing plan.
Yeah.
Therefore, the whole special permit should be open for discussion. If there's violations on that, you should be willing to entertain that.
But we aren't the enforcing body for the...
But you are the permitting body.
Yes.
And what you permitted is completely different than what is there on the ground.
I don't agree with that at all.
Well...
Then you should file a formal request for a zoning violation with the code enforcement officer. And that's how it comes back to us with, with what your concerns are. We only hear the applications that we are given. And the application we are, we, that's before us is simply related to, related to the porch and not the height and the foundation and that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
I'm leaving water to the side.
Sure. You want to come up? Then have a seat.
I need to get here.
Oh.
It's going to be short.
Okay.
This plan originally allowed to show a deck on it.
Uh huh.
If you're looking at a zoning dialogue, what a deck, what state foot is, this is not a deck, because it's enclosed. I would not have certainly, for this increase, the reason in fact, was trying to do this because of the content of the building inspector and the permit, I believe. Okay? And my question is, the windows were taken out of it, all that stuff. Was there ever a permit issued for that? May I ask that through you, to the building?
Okay.
No, no permission for windows.
No.
So, we build what we want. We build past what the special permit says, because the special permit was very clear. It said precisely the plan. My understanding is, this is a regulatory board issuing a permit. He is in charge of enforcing it. Okay? So when the enforcement came up, it came back to you. So basically, you do what you want and then ask for forgiveness afterwards? Other than that, you issuing this is what you're telling people, by allowing that deck to be closed. Indeed.
We...
So you are, because it was already told to be taken away.
And they took it away.
No, it didn't. It's still there. The only thing that's gone is the windows. The plan that you approved, correct me if I'm wrong, is very clear. It says banister railing in the original plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you cannot build something other than that unless you come here first. Is that correct?
That's why...
Unless you, unless you violate something.
That's why they're here.
Yeah.
So by them doing that, it gives them the opportunity to ask for forgiveness, to get more than what the original plan allowed, that we approved and we did not appeal with being neighbors. But tonight we're here because we wanted more than what you would give them. They tried to do something different. Now they're downsizing by taking the windows out, but still getting more than what the plan said they were allowed to have. Am I incorrect in that statement?
I'm not sure that they're getting now more, I mean, I...
And they're getting more than banister railings.
They're getting more than a banister railing, but I'm not sure that, that a solid railing versus a banister railing is not a design issue rather than a permitting issue.
Well, if the wind can blow through a banister railing, and it's blowing forty, I can't sit on my deck. But if there's a wall between me and the other side, I can sit on my deck. So you're getting more.
I, I think that's a ridiculous argument. I actually disagree with that slightly.
Uh huh. Okay.
This, this particular hearing has really bothered me, because when we had the original hearing, we added a condition that that railing was not to be changed, because we did not want to see what has come back in front of us. And it, this is exactly where we're at right now. And we've had this happen before, where people have gone ahead and done, basically done what they wanted to do, and then come back. And I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with the process that the applicant has gone through, especially referring to our last hearing where basically blamed our building commissioner, which I felt was very unfair in, in the whole process. I was very uncomfortable with that. I didn't see the builder here. The builder should have been here, would have cleared up a lot of this. I found out later, the builder's sitting outside, so it, a lot of this really bothers me. And right now, I'm totally on the fence. I haven't made up my mind on this. What I'm looking at is, is it an egregious breach of our original condition? Or is it just a simple mistake? And it's basically what it boils down to with me. And we had it as a condition, and the applicant sat there and said, "I will never do anything to jeopardize the permit." And here we are now in a situation where the permit has been jeopardized. And I'm very uncomfortable with that, because we don't normally put conditions like that on a, on a permit for a deck. We just don't do it. This one we did for this exact reason. And I'm really, really uncomfortable. And the abutter does have a point. I mean, it should have been built to what was on the plans. It wasn't. Now it's coming back for forgiveness. At what point, as a board, do we say enough is enough? And again, I haven't made up my mind on this. I'm not, I'm just stating why I'm so uncomfortable with this. And that's where I'm at at the moment. So, somebody else might want to speak to it.
Manny, did you?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I don't disagree with anything that Manny said, but at the last meeting, we told the applicant what we wanted to see, and they've done that. I mean, I don't disagree with you at all, but I think we've gone beyond that.
If I may, I, I don't disagree with what Mick's saying, but I think the last meeting was a, a clear lesson in what happens if you do do something that's not shown on your site plan. Meaning this board said no. It said no. And, you know, we wrestled with that for a while, and I, I think that the, the air was cleared pretty comprehensively. You know, maybe not enough, but pretty comprehensively. And I think I took away from it, you know, in my practice, that I need to be even more careful in letting people know when they get their permits, that this is exactly what you have to build. I thought this board was clear. If you don't build what we tell you can build, you're not going to get what we tell you can build. I think Trevor was kind enough to suggest an alternative that I do believe, that if the applicant had come in originally and said, "We would like to have an opaque rail instead of, instead of a banister rail," I think, I think this board probably would have considered that and considered that as not being materially different in terms of the design of the house or the use of the deck. But I don't disagree with you, Mick. I just, I just think that anybody who watched that hearing last time took home one message. You gotta build what you, what you asked to build. That's the message that got taken away. This, and forgiveness was not granted at the last meeting, and it's not being granted tonight. You know, by giving him that opaque railing, that's, I don't think that's giving, granting forgiveness. That's saying, you can keep that part of it, but we probably would have given that to you anyways. And I appreciate, I appreciate that even that latitude from the board. I think it was, it was very gracious to, to offer that and consider it and allow us to present it.
Okay. Alfred?
Mr. Zender, if you could, if you could, okay. We would have spoke differently at the original meeting, had this deck been included. We, we actually, at the abutter, thought this was a good idea, because of the way it was designed and what it was. We would have disapproved of this plan. And he still may have approved it the way it was. But we certainly would not have sat quiet through this, because of this. So what you're doing, and you're taking an abutter, agreed to, say this was a wonderful idea, and now later on, because we do what we want, you gotta realize, the contractor who built this sat in this room during that meeting. He knew what the rules were. It was quite clear that he was told what to do. The gentleman sitting next to Mr. Zender was told you, you could do exactly what you told him to do if he gave him the permit. Okay? So now, you're asking, or he's asking, because somebody decided not to listen to each other, being either the homeowner or the contractor, they were coming back. This problem would never get this far in the original group plan. I can tell you that. By telling me, felt that strong against it, we didn't feel strong against the home, he has rights to. But I can be very specific, that we would not have agreed, we would present a different case, if this porch was drawn that way in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny?
Yeah. Ben, I don't know if, were you here at the first meeting?
I think I was, Mick. Okay. I think I was.
Then, there was a big reason why the board itself put that condition in there, that it was to be built to the plan.
Exactly.
You know? And then, for some reason, it was built without even a permit, or getting permission from the building inspector. And the way how your client acted at the table really bothered me at the last meeting. And yes, we talked about, you know, the solid rail. But after I left here and I thought about the whole process that we had gone through, I believe that it should be brought back to what we approved on the first plan. And that's why I'm safe for the night.
Anybody else?
Look at yourself.
That?
You.
I am of mixed feelings on this one, because I'm not convinced that we wouldn't have gone ahead with the, with a solid rail deck in the, if we'd seen that in the original plan, because I don't think, that one does strike me as design, and I think the issues we had with the house were different. Not ones we need to revisit tonight, but those were the issues on which we, we conditioned that build exactly as it is. It didn't have to do with this.
Correct.
Do I think this is an honest error? Not necessarily. I think it probably was an attempt to get away with something, that, you know, add more to the house. And it's a very fragile location, and it's, you know, I've said facetiously to people, to me, the whole place should be marshland and we don't need a house there at all. But the applicant has a right to build. And we did say last time, and maybe we should not have, that this would be a possible solution, given the amount of money and time that's already gone into the house. So, but I hear my fellow board members, I know that they are, and I understand why you're upset about not wanting to let somebody come back for permission afterward. So I am truly on the fence, but it looks like, right now... All right, sure. Mr. Ral?
To, to us, to us. I will wipe my tongue...
To us, not, not to...
Yes, I will wipe my tongue and guard the rail there, but that being said, the concern about the handrail. Now, it's nice to the board, try to remove the windows, but the problem exists that those can easily go back. Now, I'll give you the example of Moby Dick, that we're all familiar with. Moby Dick was a porch earl, for those of us who are here years ago. Rail went in for ten or fifteen years. He had screens, and it's plastic grates. And what do you know? Windows. We've gone through several incarnations of building inspectors, multiple boards, and that's what happens all the time. Next thing you know, it's a full-blown building. Same thing will apply to the condition of your roof. The roof states that rain must fall through the death force, although that sounds good. And what happened? He was under the dryer room, says. That's a roof under the death force, doesn't require permit, neither a roof nor a desk, but he needs a condition of the special permit, and it's a dryer room. So these are the things that happen, and these are how buildings grow. And I think that's the concern to the solid rail versus the open balusters. The open balusters, there are no shenanigans that can go on. That room will always be exposed to the weather and remain as such. But the minute you start putting a little room where that becomes dry, and becomes a little taller, and you can put up plastic curtains, it becomes a room, and therefore increases the size and density of the home. And that's what unfortunately does happen. And I think that's why the boards are very widely conditioned as such in the first place.
If I may, the windows were expensive, I'm sure. I, I haven't asked my client what they cost. I haven't asked what the screens cost. I cost, I'll tell you right now, $400 an hour to drive down here and to drive back, and listen to the radio on the way down, on the way back, and to sit here and, and do all the things I've done to get us to the point that we're at today. We could offer, and we could record with the registry of deeds, a deed condition that says, "There shall be no windows on this porch." But what happens in these cases, and, and, and this is what frustrates me about these cases, is the process and the procedure begins to become more important than the result. Meaning, what we're doing now is, we're here at a point where he may have to tear out his, his railings, and may well, based on the vote of this board tonight, because, A, of the way things were done, and B, because we have a particularly vocal and, and committed abutter in this case. And we know that these cases always come down to how vocal and committed the abutters are. What should be driving this board is, what is the result on the ground? Does it fit? Is it appropriate? Would he have gotten it if he asked for it? And, you know, the punishment right now, look, one of the punishments would be tear it out. Right, of course. He tears it out, spends the money, he can do that. You know, he's not only losing the money on the window, he's losing the money on the deck. He's paying for me, he's paying for everything else. It wasn't done correctly. It, it just wasn't. And you told him that last time, and you punished him, you said, "You can't have the windows, you can't have the screens." Now we're taking it a step further. We came back in good faith. Ultimately, what this board should be looking at, I think, is the design. I always say, good plans make good applications, good people make good applications. Right now, you know, we have a people question, but we have a good plan. Would you have approved it? Do you think there's a problem with it? If you don't, you know, we should move pa, I think we should try to move past what's happened and, and do this. I, I don't think anybody, no matter how we walk out of this tonight, nobody's walking out of it. Nobody. You know, so it's...
If you put a condition on it, then, if it was left as it is, or even if it was taken down, as long as he meets the setbacks, he could go back to the building inspector and, and get a permit to use that as a screen and porch, or to build a screen and porch, whatever you want to call it.
No, the deed restriction, you can't.
But that's what I mean.
You can't.
So why, why would you put a deed restriction on it?
Well, look, right now, and, and to, to go to what David said, yeah, absolutely. I see creep all the time. But you know what happens? But more often than not, what happens, it's not creep that somebody builds something they're not allowed to build. They, they get the wall, then they come back to this board and they say, "Look, our customers are cold," you know? They, or they come back and they say, "Look, you know, you know, we're sick of replacing the canvas, we want to put a rigid roof on." It's, it's more bites of the apple than it is people doing things illegally. I'm willing to bet that if somebody in this house installed a window or a screen, the building inspector would know about it within about fifteen minutes. Like, I don't, this, it's not like somebody converting a basement, or, you know, or sneaking a bedroom into the garage. It's, it, it can't happen on this site. It, 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 it could, but it won't. I think what we're dealing with right now is just the punishment question. That's what we're dealing with. And, and it's a legitimate question, but this, this board is not here to punish people. It's here to request reviews and, and to see whether they're appropriate or not appropriate. And whatever you decide, you know, I respect, always.
Going to what, I, I appreciate what you said, counselor. My issue was, when we put a condition on this deck, we don't do that generally. We just don't do it. We made that very specific.
I, I know that.
That's, that's what really bothers me more than anything else.
I understand that. And I, and, and look, I, I knew that at the first hearing, Mick. You know, I've known that, you know, I know that, but that's, ultimately, I'm hoping that's not what drives an approval.
For sure. I, I understand that point of view. So what do we do? Do we want to? Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to put this thing to bed. I'm not, me personally, I really don't have a bad bone in my body. I understand where the abutters are coming through. I really do get it. But you're very lucky that this man here is on the board, and he came up with that compromise. I'm not hugely in favor. I will vote in favor of it. You're going to have, and we can put this to bed, and, but I'm really, really unhappy about it. And I'm very unhappy how you personally attacked the building inspector. I think you owe that man an apology the next time you go down to it. And you should do it down at his, his office, because that was, that was uncalled for.
I'm sorry, Gus.
Yeah, but you, you should talk to him in private about it too, because there's better ways of doing that. And then, that's it. I, I'm not going to be the one to follow my sword on this issue, even though I'm really unhappy about it.
Understood.
Okay? I think that's where we're at.
All right. I'm gonna, Mr. Ral, speak one more time, then I'm, unless anybody else has any other questions for any of these gentlemen, I'm going to move to close the hearing, but you can just...
I guess let this go with the fact of what the applicant says to the board and what transpires in reality. And what Mr. Quendryham brought up at your original hearing was, he was asked if there was going to be two railings. And the applicant stated that this was going to be a one-railing unit. Then why, after the hearing was closed, a year and a half later, he told the private, with the plumbing department, for two kitchens? So he told you one thing and did another. And there's history with this. And that's why I say this whole business and shenanigans with the handrail is just more smoke and mirrors. And you should not buy into that. Keep in mind, this building should not even be there. It's got seventeen variances on the septic system. It is in a wrong location. There are a lot of problems that exist with this. This is just another little piece in the puzzle. You're being told, "I won't do it." Yet, you turn around and you pull a permit for two kitchens. You got duped on that one.
Yeah, that, that's to do with the building inspector.
You got duped and...
I understand, but they...
Justin doesn't issue that permit. That's the plumbing department.
Well, you can go, you can file, you can file a grievance and that, no problem. Right now, we're just dealing with this particular issue. So, but I, I thank you for your comments, but we've got to deal with what we have in front of us.
So before I ask to close the hearing, we got to make sure that we don't need any information from anyone else. So do, does anyone need more information from the...
No.
Then I will entertain, and go ahead and sit down. And we, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing and...
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Okay. One last round then. Rita, do you have any other comments?
No.
The rest of us?
No.
Can you hear it enough for me?
No, I don't hear it.
Will? Senator Trevor? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to go to findings.
I'll make a motion to go to findings. Second.
In favor?
I'm sorry, who's second it is?
I did.
Trevor.[1742.12] Trevor.
I love you using a microphone.
Except me, I am. But then they started echoing.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
All right, so, see what you think of these. The property comprises approximately 12,281 square feet of land, 5,424 square feet of building, buildable upland, and 56 linear feet of frontage on Holbrook Avenue, and is located in the central zoning district. The lot is non-conforming as to lot area, where 20,000 square feet is required, and as to street frontage, where 125 feet is required. The applicant proposes to amend Special Permit 1733 to modify an approved first-floor deck to install solid three-foot-high railings. The proposed alteration will maintain the same setbacks. The windows in the first-floor deck are to be removed prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, and there are to be no windows or screens installed on the first-floor deck. There are no identifiable adverse effects on the town and the vicinity associated with the proposal. The proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure, and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the special permit granting objectives as set forth in Section 8.4.2 of the zoning bylaws.
I would change number three.
Okay.
To say, modify an approved first-floor deck to install all solid three-foot-high railings in lieu of --
Okay.
The open fur railing system that was originally approved.
Thank you. In lieu of the open --
Open fur railing system, because that's how they labeled it on the original draft.
Okay, system originally approved.
As originally approved.
Okay.
And I have one suggestion on the screening, just because I know someone's putting in a deck where, a porch where the screens come down, you can push a button, and they all go up. So probably you ought to say no, however we want to word that, that said, no retractable screening as well, because otherwise they could look open most of the time, and you push a button, and then down come the screens.
How about no screening whatsoever?
It says, no windows or screens.
Whatsoever.
How about for good measure, we also throw in doors? No windows or screens or doors?
Okay.
Ben?
No, no, we're not talking to Ben now. We've closed the hearing.
Oh.
You've got to be, got to be strict about this. I gave you your chance to talk to Ben. Can't talk to Ben anymore. Okay, all right. So, no windows, screens, permitted or retractable, or doors.
Or plastic windows.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's unfortunate, but this is what we have to do with this particular applicant.
I think that's fine.
Okay, anything else? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the findings?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it was, Trevor is the second, and --
Trevor made the motion, and --
Well --
Oh, I thought I did, but whatever.
Oh, you made the motion?
Yeah, Dan made the motion, Trevor seconded it. Okay, based on the findings, I need a motion to approve the amendment to the special permit.
I move to amend the special permit based on the findings.
Second. All in favor? All right. We do need to stamp --
This one.
This one. I do have a couple of business things before we adjourn, so, stamp.
Yeah.
Two, thirteen.
I hope I --
Not we all.
Can I have that one?
We need more than one of these?
Chris, do we need more than one of these?
You need one.
You need one? Okay.
I scribbled on application.
That's one.
Oh, we're --
Ruth, could I have your one? That's why I have mine.
Pretty protective. I --
Okay, good. We have another one, too.
Don't you be bossing me around.
Hey, listen, that's what they made me the big bucks for, to boss you around. All right, is this the latest and greatest? I don't, I don't know. This is Ben's. This is the new one.
Nope, I don't have a new one. These are all old. I gave my new one away.
Okay, yeah, this is, this is one for you. This is one for Ben. I need one more, right?
Fingers to the bone to make one of those.
Do you have a date on this?
God, that's funny.
One, two. How could we, this, so this is --
Look at this side, because this is the side that was updated.
Yeah, I finished the, um --
Yeah, no windows or screens, yeah.
One of the board members, young guy, Paul Wallace, is restoring 72 pound net.
This one is yours. I don't know.
You really should stamp this side, because this is the side that's important, not the same thing as the other side.
Yeah, right.
Oh, Manny, you can't do your job right.
I got to put a plate on it.
Stamp that side. Is this the one?
Three twenty-five years, I'm talking.
Yeah, no windows or screens. That's how I do it. I don't do it by date anymore.
I think it was like two eighty for the three lights. How many miles a year do you play? How many miles?
You gave him the stamp. He's wild and crazy.
Yeah, they asked you that. Need to down thousands.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we have minutes, and I have one issue to raise as a business issue. So, minutes did we do?
Sounds juicy.
I'm living the dream in you. What would a dream be? Oh, that's a dream.
Minutes.
What minutes did we have?
This is January.
Shh. All right.
Take it outside, please.
Take it outside. We need a motion to approve the minutes from January.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from January.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I made the motion. Manny seconded.
And Manny seconded. And we're all in favor. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the April meeting. The April meeting is April 9th, which is both Monday, Thursday, and Passover. And I would like not to be here. And Bruce is going to be out of town, so I am proposing that we move the meeting one week. Would that be a problem for anyone?
Sure, one week --
One week forward?
One week back, to, from April 9th to April, whatever that --
Second? Second?
No, not the second, the one after sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Rats, I'll be here.
Nine and seven is sixteen.
Nine, seven, sixteen.
Okay. April sixteenth.
Rats, you'll be here. It's fine with me.
Fine, anybody have a problem with April sixteenth? That way I can go to church?
Let me just check.
Okay.
So what is it, Monday?
It's Monday, Thursday.
As well as you pray for me.
It's a holy day of obligation for those of you who are not Latin.
How do you spell it?
M-A-U-N-D-Y. Comes from mundatum, which is a new commandment that I give you, that you love one another. And so --
Did you come up with that?
Latin. So anyway, I want to go to church, and there will be people who want to have sators, so.
Monday, Thursday? Wednesday, Good Friday?
Yes, Monday, Thursday. That's the truth. Yes, it's, it's the day before Good Friday.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's a big thing down the aisles.
It's a big thing.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Good Friday was a really --
Okay, so we're going to the seventeenth.
No, no.
Do we need to vote?
Sixteenth.
It's the sixteenth.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move the hearing one week to the sixteenth of April.
Okay.
At 7:00 P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?